We'll catch up quick.
Hopefully. All depends on the talkers. Could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We didn't read the agenda before we went into executive session, but it does read public service announcements, 635, which we're past a public hearing, Hamilton Rod and Gun Club gravel removal. Public hearings cannot start before the stated time, but they can start later, so we're not in any problem with that. Seven o'clock, we have a public hearing, Sturbridge Auto Sales, used car license revocation, suspension or modification, department head updates, water sewer, DPW conservation. Next, town administrators update, old business, new business, correspondence, minutes, citizens forum, and then we adjourn. So who is here from Hamilton Rod and Gun Club?
Hi, Donald Taft.
When you come up, would you sign our little sign-in sheet?
Sure.
That's next door, so we'll, next to the table, so that we can know the correct spelling of everyone's name. I apologize, it's just kind of warm in here tonight, I'm not sure why.
Well, I'm very comfortable.
It says it's seventy.
I don't think that's right.
But it's only on, it's on cool, is that where it's supposed to be?
This gentleman's wearing a sweatshirt, so I guess you're.
Well, I just came, I just came in from the cold, so.
Yeah, it's fine, you're outfitted. Um, could you introduce yourself to the audience at home, please? That's what the mic's for.
Donald Taft, I was the past president of the Hamilton Rod and Gun Club.
Okay, now, this is a continuation, and do we have any information from Burton Engineer?
Were they not coming today, or?
They were, as far as I know. I talked, we've been working with the engineer, who has been working with Rampco, and they've revised the plan. Last time I talked with him, he was gonna get it here last week. So if you don't have it, I don't have it either.
Greg, did you get it?
Not last week.
No.
I had one from like, a month ago, probably.
Yeah, July.
Right, the one we questioned, and you had comments about.
I think Rebecca Gendreau also, and.
Well, they might have revised it, but it wasn't, I didn't get it last week, but I had it for a while.
No, this would have been, the last copy that I received was Wednesday, Kevin?
Thursday.
Thursday, so.
Do you have the plans with you?
I only, I only had a computer copy, which would've been eight and a half by eleven, which was not adequate to really review.
Okay, 'cause we are expecting a write-up too on the.
I, I understand.
Yeah.
I thought we, I thought we were all in line. The engineer's supposed to be here, I don't know where he is.
Well, he's obviously not here, so I don't think we.
You could, you could recess this.
Yes, until.
And maybe take it up later in the evening, if he arrives.
Yes, and then if he doesn't arrive, we could continue it.
Continue, yeah. Okay.
But, I mean, this is the second continuation already.
I understand.
How do we know that the copy that our DPW director has isn't the same one from last week? Well, we don't. No, I know, I mean, that might even be useful to talk to Greg during the recess.
I mean, I could look at the one that he has, but I guarantee that if it wasn't this week, then it's not the new copy.
And besides, Greg had some questions.
Yeah, oh, even on the revised one?
Right, yeah. Well, he hasn't even seen the revised one, evidently.
Right, well, he saw one revised one, but I get it.
Right.
It's a more up-to-date one.
We were waiting for answers to the questions.
I agree, I know.
From the others. So is there a motion, then, to recess this till later in the evening?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, yeah.
Any discussion, all in favor? Okay, so, looks like you're stuck with us.
Hang tight.
If he doesn't come, would it be, would be another hearing?
We'd continue it.
Thank you.
That won't require more advertising or posting in the paper.
Just right in this, okay. Okay, see, we're catching up, we're early, so.
Not if we have to revisit that, would not.
I know. Okay, so, we do have public service announcements. Help Sturbridge with our natural hazard mitigation plan. The town of Sturbridge and the Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission are working together to update the town's natural hazard mitigation plan. As the name implies, the plan centers around the study of the various natural hazards that could affect Sturbridge, and proposes ways in which the town can mitigate or reduce the risk of these hazards. This plan is important not only to help enhance our community's preparedness, but it also helps to make federal emergency preparedness funding available to Sturbridge as well. The town has posted a link on the town's website for a survey to get public input into the process. Okay, you can go to the town's website, and there's a link there to click on. Also, we have a request from Kevin Filczak, it says on September 20th, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., there will be the first ever Sturbridge Community Bonfire presented by the Sturbridge Host Hotel and the Sturbridge Special Events Committee. As you know from past emails and newsletters, the goal of the Special Events Committee is to bring new community events to town to encourage tourism, support local businesses, and to foster community spirit. The bonfire was an idea of the committee to achieve this mission, and the Host Hotel has, was kind enough to offer the host, to host the event. At, as this is a community event, the committee and the host want to make sure that we have a good representation of our business community at this event. We are currently looking for vendors who may be willing to bring food, goods, and/or other items that you can offer, sell to visitors to our first community bonfire. If this is something that interests you, please contact me at your earliest convenience. That's Kevin Filczak, the Economic Development Tourism Coordinator. Okay, and then we do have a letter from the Board of Health, it also went out on people who automatically receive town notices. It was about the West Nile virus, mosquitoes were caught last year, 5,496 mosquito samples were tested, 290 samples were positive, Sturbridge had one West Nile virus positive mosquito samples. So this is on the website, and it shows you how to be aware of mosquito hours, clothing, how to mosquito-proof your home, install, different things. The town does spray, and if you're unsure, if you're on the schedule, you can go on to Central Mass Mosquito Control, and they have their schedule up, and you can specially request spraying for your street. Okay.
Mary, do you have a question?
Are we still doing current events?
Current events. Okay, before you go to public, can I just piggyback to her?
Sure, absolutely.
Before you change the topic?
Yep, that's okay.
I, I, in conjunction to what the chair just said, I did go to that site and requested service on my property, and they came within a couple of days. And for anyone who's concerned, they come at night, they send you an email to tell you that they're coming. And so, just so you all know, okay?
They're real quiet.
They're very good, you don't even know that, you don't know they came. They tell you they're coming, and then the next morning, they'll tell you, we've taken care of your property, you're all set, so.
Okay, thanks for saying that.
Thank you.
I think you did read it. Did you read the date of the bonfire?
Yep.
I just didn't hear you.
September 20th.
Okay, that's fine. And I just wanna say that there's going to be vendors, but there's also, we're also looking into having entertainment, a couple local bands, so we would like, encourage residents to attend.
No mosquitoes.
Yeah, you can't promise that.
Not with the fire.
Okay, it's almost seven, we could maybe sneak in?
How about, could we do the proclamation for the Hoyts? In your agenda package, Madam Chair, I have prepared, or I should say, Janay has prepared, a proclamation from the Board of Selectmen at the request of the Selectmen at the last Selectmen's meeting for, for Rick Hoyt, and I would be happy to read it for the, for the record.
Oh, I got it here, it's okay.
Oh, you got it, okay.
Yeah, yeah, right under TAs. Okay, whereas Rick Hoyt was diagnosed as a spastic quadriplegic with cerebral palsy after his birth, and doctors informed his parents that it was unlikely he would live a normal life. And whereas Rick was unable to walk or speak, his ability to think and learn were never slowed, and as his knowledge grew, he and his parents fought to be included in public school, ultimately being admitted to public school at age of thirteen, and then later graduating from Boston University in 1993. And whereas Rick and his family worked with a group of researchers at Tufts University in 1972 to develop a computer that would allow Rick to speak, his first words were "Go Bruins," demonstrating his deep love of sports. And whereas, in 1977, Dick and Rick participated in their first of 1,000, 1,100 road races, marathons, and triathlons that helped to demonstrate their dedication and to drive to support equal access to sports regardless of disabilities, using the timeless motto, "Yes, you can." And whereas Rick is currently a resident of the town of Sturbridge, now therefore be it resolved that the town of Sturbridge and the Board of Selectmen wishes to honor the legacy of Rick Hoyt and all that he has and continues to do to support equal access to sports for all regardless of disabilities. And we further dedicate September 9th, 2018, as Rick Hoyt Day in the town of Sturbridge. Signed this day, August 20th, 2018. Is there a motion to sign the proclamation?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor? Okay, it is now seven.
Greg, what we will do is we will get, we will have your signatures on the proclamation, we'll get it framed for presentation at the beginning of the race in September. That's the plan.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was gonna ask, if we can present it on the day of the race. Thank you.
Okay.
The time is seven, Madam Chair.
Yes. Mary, do you have the public hearing notice?
I will.
Second page, and the, yes.
The Board of Selectmen of the town of Sturbridge will hold a public hearing to consider the revocation, suspension, or modification of the used car license issued to Sturbridge Auto Sales 33 Main Street, Sturbridge, on the grounds that the license holder bypassed Mass law of having a salvaged vehicle inspected at a salvage title facility, failing to maintain a used car record book, and failure to secure workman's compensation as required by Mass general law. The hearing will be held on Monday, August 20, 2018, at 7:00 p.m. in the Selectmen's Room of Sturbridge Town Hall 308 Main Street, Sturbridge.
Okay, and we do have Trooper Johnson.
Yes.
Okay, could you please come forward? Have a seat, relax.
Will you pull this out?
You can sign your name, please.
We may be able to figure out how to spell your name.
Pretty easy.
Know with names.
Madam Chair, while he's signing in, I just want you to know, in your agenda package, you have correspondence, the copy of our certified letter to Robert Kazem, the Sturbridge Auto Sales, you have correspondence from Trooper Johnson of the. You have correspondence from Trooper Johnson of the Mass State Police as to the history of this case, with some corresponding materials, also a copy of, a secondary copy of materials which details his report to his supervisor, as well as copies of the information from the state of Vermont. And received late, late, late this afternoon, a clipped package that I left on your table of a PDF that he was sent to me, and I apologize, I haven't been able to go through this, I just got this.
That's okay, I have gone through it, I can explain it to you.
So the Board of Selectmen did get a copy of this, however, they haven't had a chance to review this. So I think, Trooper Johnson, it would be helpful if you could walk your complaint about Sturbridge Auto Sales through to the Board of Selectmen, and then I think, Madam Chair, you should hear from Sturbridge Auto Sales in response.
Okay, so this investigation started back in 2014 when it was Garfield Incorporated, and we got notification from the Vermont Department of Motor Vehicles that they had been taking salvage vehicles up to Vermont, selling to a friend, and then having the title re-titled in Vermont, and then the friend selling it back to Garfield in Massachusetts without the salvage title inspection. So Massachusetts requires, if you have a Massachusetts salvage vehicle, to go through an inspection process. And so you have to show, you know, receipts, and that those items were fixed in that salvage title vehicle. I have another trooper here from salvage title unit, he can explain the salvage title process. I'm not in that unit, so I don't know that process very well.
Okay, would you please come join him?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. And you can also sign in and then introduce yourself.
I got you, I got you. Trooper Lawrence, domestic police salvage title section, we're both part of the motor vehicle regulatory section, Quincy. So if I will, the salvage process. So when this investigation began with Trooper Johnson, he called the office and spoke to our supervisor to see if I can come out to assist him with the investigation. I came out to the property, located at, is it 33 Main Street?
Main Street.
Right on Main Street in Sturbridge. Got to the scene, and I went inside and had conversation with Mr. Cassim, who's seated here inside your room today. He stated to me that we asked him for his used car record book and so on and so forth, but I was more concerned with the salvage title stuff. The salvage title process is that when a car is completely totaled, and the insurance company deems it totaled, that you can buy it from auction as a damaged vehicle, then you can go and get it repaired, if it's repairable, by going through the process of replacing all the damaged parts that are documented on the appraisal form from the insurance company. Once you've gotten that fixed with all the brand-new parts or the used parts that are still salvageable, you bring that vehicle in for an inspection, having gone through the application process and everything, and you present it to the inspector to see that the vehicle's been properly put back together, and that its parts aren't stolen, that kind of thing. When I approached Mr. Cassim about the vehicles that we had in question from Vermont, I asked him, tell me the truth, was this, are there vehicles that you used to circumvent the process? He didn't know what I meant at first, but I mentioned the name of the person that he used regularly, that lived in Vermont, the Vermont address, and he told me what he did. Mr. Cassim was very clear. He said he brought the vehicles down, one flood vehicle down, to the North Borough site for inspection. It was a flood vehicle, and he said Trooper Burns at the site told him he needed to replace airbags and all these things, they were too expensive, and he didn't have the money to do it. So what he did was go to his friend, William Taylor, in Vermont, use this person repeatedly, to sell him the car, and then he would go with the paperwork to Vermont, to then title it in Vermont. And once he got titled in Vermont, he'd bring it somewhere for an inspection stamp, and then bring it back to Mr. Cassim, so he can then title it back in Massachusetts and resell the vehicle, totally circumventing the process of inspection. So when I explained that that was not legal, and that he needs to cease and desist in doing that, that was on July 30th of this year. The next one was July 31st, the following day. And that's all documented through the Registry of Motor Vehicles. So the process has been circumvented so many times that Vermont even missed some of them, they tried to go through the process to figure out which ones were done. So there's vehicles in Massachusetts right now that are purchased and sold by Mr. Cassim under the guise of the Sturbridge Auto Sales that are on the road now, that the airbags probably don't work, things that are damaged in the vehicle may not work. The process is so important because these major floods we've had down in Texas and Miami and Florida, that these airbags sometimes test positive that they work. But we actually have in our office, airbags that were in submerged water that are all corroded on the inside and don't, they don't go off, they don't explode. So when they don't go off, the airbag doesn't deploy, and the person in the car accident doesn't have an airbag. That's a problem, that's a very, it's a big safety issue. Anything that's underwater has to be replaced, whether it's the seatbelt retractors, the airbags themselves, which are all over your car. And there's a control module on your dashboard, beneath the dashboard on the floor, that when that gets wet, nothing gets, nothing works right. So the possibility is that this vehicle's out there, they don't have any inspection at all, and we don't know which ones they are. So when he was explained the process and told why it wasn't legal, he followed up by doing the same thing the very next day.
Okay, so the packet I sent today, it's in the paper clips, I stapled them all separately because it's too much for you, but there's 12 different vehicles that we know of, at least anyway, that were sold to William Taylor, re-titled, and sold back to Sturbridge Auto Body for him to sell again, circumventing the inspection process. When we did this, so Trooper Lawrence does the salvage title, I do vehicle services, so I deal with the dealer plates. So I go, whoever has dealer plates, repair plates, I do those inspections to make sure they qualify for the plates. When we get complaints about plates being either rented, or borrowed, or misused, I get the complaint, and then I go out to that place. So I got that complaint from Vermont, so I went out to Sturbridge Auto Body, and when I asked about a used car record book, it was required by Chapter 140, Section 62, he said he hasn't been keeping a record book for years. Okay, that's required by law. He doesn't have any paperwork, no receipts for vehicles he's fixed, no paperwork, anything. His office is just a big pile of mess. Apparently, he's gotten workman's comp now because workman's, people went down there on Friday, this past Friday, and now he has workman's comp. The other problem that he had was the Norris Consumers, which is a warranty limit law stickers that are required on the vehicles, there weren't any, and I doubt that these, I don't know, but I doubt that any of these vehicles that he sold got a copy of the limit law. So that's really the complaint we brought forth.
Okay, now, what is the penalty from your department?
So if we file charges, and I think I sent you, it's in the law what the penalties are, if convicted, of course.
Right.
There was a fine of not more than $500, or jail time of one year or less. And then, if he was convicted, a letter would be sent to the registry, and his place would be revoked.
It's per charge.
Yeah.
And there are numerous charges in vehicles involved.
Right, okay. Questions from the board?
Mary? I have a couple. You said that there's no way for us to know who owns these cars, but you do know of 12.
So, yes.
So do you notify these owners?
So that's what's happening now. The transactions are already taking place, and you buy a car you believe has a clear title, like you bought it from me, it's my car, and I'm selling it to you, it's a clear title. But what you don't know is that it was involved in a flood, and no one reported it. So several of these vehicles have some sort of cracks in Vermont, and there's a problem in Vermont, and that's why people have been capitalizing on these problems. There's a loophole, and they're trying to close that loophole now. But what's happened, now that we know which ones are involved, through various things like Carfax and doing research, the Registry of Motor Vehicles in Mass is taking the step of advising the owner of the new car, their new car, that it's not a new car anymore, it's going to be a rebuilt car. The problem with that is, and it doesn't sound like a big deal to everybody else, the difference between a clear title and a rebuilt title is that the clear title has value, rebuilt title has no value. The car has been rebuilt, been involved in collision, a flood, things like that, that takes away all of its value. So when you have it, you get a 2015 Subaru, he deals in Subarus a lot, it's a great car, the market price is X amount of dollars, but once it's a salvage vehicle or a flood vehicle, the value is already lost, and the driver should, the owner should know that, because they find out sometimes. The owners will sometimes go to trade their car in at a dealership, and the dealership will find out through Carfax and other means that the car's been involved in a total collision and has no value anymore. And so that's part of the problem. The other part of the problem is that they're not safe vehicles, because we don't know, they haven't been inspected in some cases, we don't know if the airbags will deploy at all, much less the seatbelt retractors getting stuck. These things are metal devices, there is components inside of them, and when they get submerged in water for any length of time, they get corroded on the inside, and it stops the firing mechanisms from going off, and these things won't deploy, it won't stop the seatbelt. So if you're wearing a seatbelt and you're driving a car, and the thing is corroded, it becomes a complete stop, you think the pendulum device is going to stop you from going forward, it does not, you go forward and smash your head right through the windshield. And that's what part of the problem is here.
Now, when they allegedly sold to Vermont, and you have the documentation to show it to a friend, what's the magic about Vermont? They don't require an inspection when you go to sell it back?
So their inspection process is different than ours. We have state-required inspection sites that state troopers do, and I think in Vermont it's a little bit different. But whatever the case, the paperwork got to Vermont in some cases and did not have a rebuilt status or a salvage title status on it, and for some reason, they came back as clear titles. And I think they have a copy of one of them right here.
Let me see if I can show you an example of what a title looks like.
So were they misrepresented even when they went to Vermont?
That's what we believe, yes, ma'am.
So a salvage title vehicle in Massachusetts, the title looks like this. It says salvage across it, and they'll tell you what the problem is, flood, repairable flood, okay? You go to Vermont, at a DMV, once in a while, you turn this title in to get a new Vermont title, and they might not put salvage title vehicle on there, they'll give you a clean title. So now you have a clean title, and you really had a salvage vehicle. And that's an issue up in Vermont, that's a Vermont issue, in fact, I think our registry, I don't know if they're going to even take Vermont anymore.
Yes, so.
So did these 12 cars show a clear title?
What's that?
The 12 cars that you know went through this?
Some, not all of them. Some, not all, but Vermont's inspection is not the same as Massachusetts.
Right, no, I understand, but some of them had a clear title, and some of them showed a salvage title.
Correct, yes.
Do you have a copy of the Vermont case number, the cases?
Yes.
Okay, the very first one, you'll see, if I can just refer you to paragraph number two, 2004 Subaru Legacy, another purchased vehicle from William Taylor through the Garfield site, which is actually Sturbridge Auto Sales. But if you look at the bottom of the paragraph, the last sentence says, Vermont certificate of title number blah, 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 was sent to Taylor without any rebuilt brand, which means it's a clear title. Once you have a clear title, you go somewhere else, another state, it goes right in as a clear title. And if it didn't get picked up on, it would go as a clear title to the next person until someone found out about it. In this case, in some of these cases, people have found out through other means, like Carfax. Go down to Carfax, you put your VIN number in, and it says, oh, it's totaled in Massachusetts. What do you mean it was totaled in Massachusetts? I bought it in Vermont, it's a clear title. And that's what happened, so it got, so now the Registry of Mass is flagging all salvage titles from Vermont, just to catch them in case there's an issue. And several of Mr. Cassim's vehicles in the last three weeks have been flagged, and he's called the registry directly to speak to Antonio Di Sisto directly, who is in charge of titles in Mass, to figure out what's wrong with his and why he's being flagged, but he knows why he's being flagged. In fact, when I read your letter, the letter that he responded to you folks with, it said he had no idea what you're talking about, about the vehicles being circumvented in the process of salvage title. But we had a long and very lengthy conversation on July 30th, only to have him do it once again on July 31st the following day.
Anything else, Mary?
No.
Anything else from the board? Okay, Mr. Cassim? Could you please sign in and then speak into the mic with your name?
Hi, how am I, Robert Cassim.
Okay, good evening.
Robert Cassim.
Yes, would you like to explain your?
Well, truthfully, I take the cars, what I used to do, I used to have a couple friends in Vermont, a friend of mine from Vermont, and he needed to make a couple dollars, so I would take the car up to Vermont, and he would, we would rebuild the car, take it to the Vermont registry, he'd take it to the Vermont registry, he'd have it take it to a guy in Putney, the guy would do the inspections on the vehicle, and then I'd do all the paperwork corrected on the car, everything that was needed, and I'd leave the car up there until the title came back as rebuilt. I didn't have any plans of any titles coming back clean. I didn't know anything about any titles coming back clean, and that's not what I do, I don't represent my cars like that, I don't sell their car. And as far as flood cars go, or any damaged cars, I fix it correctly, and everybody that had ever bought one off me, I never had one come back for nothing, not even for an airbag light, not even for check engine light, not even for seatbelts. I've been selling floods for 10 years, I never, never, never had a, never had a problem. So I would just send a couple, and as far as, he's not telling you what's going on with the flood cars, they have meetings every single week, changing all their rules. First time it'd be, take the rugs out, take the pictures. Now they want to do, check all your electronic components, take a picture where the water line is. Now they want, now they say if the water line goes up to like, up to the console, they want every single thing replaced. So if you take it to one trooper, like Mr. Burns, which he understands everything, he's the good guy. But if you take it to another trooper, and you have the car sold, then you have a lovely customer at your parking lot with the money on him that wants to buy it, and you have to go back with a laundry list with a rejection letter on it. I didn't know that I couldn't take a car to someplace else to get inspected. If I knew that, I would never, never done that. I think I worked seven days a week for that to happen to me, and that's, and we have the Carfaxes, from all the cars I took to Vermont, and it all says, rebuilt, 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 rebuilt. And that's, and that's what it is, I apologize for, if I did something wrong, because I didn't know I did anything wrong. And when he came to my place, he didn't tell me I did something wrong. He didn't tell me, he didn't tell me, no, he didn't tell me that going to Vermont was illegal and against the law, because if it's illegal, I would never went to Vermont.
Well, Mary, what did he, now, he told you, he said to cease and desist from certain action, what action did he, in your opinion, tell you to cease and desist from?
He mentioned.
Because he said that he was talking to you for an hour and a half, so.
He never, he never, he never come out with a checklist of everything I did wrong, he never gave me his business card.
What did he tell you to stop doing in terms of your practice?
He said, don't go to Vermont, don't get any more rebuilt, don't go to Vermont, and don't rebuild your cars in Vermont no more. So I said, no problem, so I am not doing it anymore, that's all he told me.
But he said the very next day?
No, I had one car sold.
But.
The lady went to, already went to the registry, already went to get a bank check, and I already had it sold. I didn't go to Vermont to get inspected, it was already been, it's already been through the process of Vermont. So what am I going to say to the young lady? She was already there, she had the check on her.
But you don't have any of your paperwork?
Yeah, I have, I have my book, I did the best I could with my book. I've been going.
The best you could is based on recall?
No, 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 we put it together, we put it together as I could.
Then, but the trooper said you didn't have?
I have records, but it was all over the place. I don't lie, it was all over the place, my records were all over the place. I had all the receipts, I have all my receipts, I have everything, I just.
And where are they right now?
My receipts, I have all my receipts at my office.
So if somebody went to inspect, they could?
Yeah, I have all, I have all, every single receipt from, I just.
Do you have proof of workman's comp?
Yes, I have workman's comp here, and I also have the, some of the car, want that?
Oh, please. And what reason did you give for not having it before?
I mean, no, no really reason, I just didn't, I didn't, my employees are very, very difficult, they don't, they just come and go, and they don't like to stick around, and they don't like to give you any information, and it's really difficult.
Yeah, but it's still a requirement, and all this about, you know, you saying, this trooper's a good guy inspector, and this one's not, and things change day to day.
Yeah.
Things change, and things are for the safety of the people who buy these cars, and by all accounts that we read, you were very negligent and perhaps criminal, and that's to be determined by the state. So we grant the license for you to sell, we could revoke your license, we could suspend it, we could alterate it. I am of the opinion, with all that we've read and what you've said, that I am of the opinion with all that we've read and what you've said, that I would be willing to suspend your license pending the outcome of the state charges against you, and then we can relook at the issue again. I don't know how the rest of the board feels. So...
I'll agree with that.
Chase?
I agree.
Mike?
I agree that, you know, suspension is the appropriate action.
Okay, Mary. Well, are we certain that the state is moving forward with investigating this further? I don't want to be in a position where we suspend it indefinitely and the practice continues because the state dropped the ball, with all due respect. How, you know, where are you in your practice? Because even not having workers' comp is grounds to revoke a license, because that's the safety of your workers. And, I mean, I'm sure you, you're aware of that. So I guess I want to know a little bit more where the state stands in terms of... Trooper Johnson and pursuing this.
I can file a complaint tomorrow. I haven't filed a complaint yet.
Is there a reason?
But I can file...
Well, could you please come down the mics for the audience at home relaxing, watching?
I can file a complaint tomorrow.
Do you intend to?
Yes.
Okay.
I do.
And normally, how long would that process take, would you say?
It depends on, is it Southbridge Court here for Sturbridge?
Dudley District.
From this area?
Dudley District.
What's that?
Dudley District.
Dudley District. So I don't know the caseload in Dudley District Court.
Yeah.
So I have no idea how long it would take.
Yeah, but...
Usually, they'd have a pre-conference hearing, and they could dispose of it then.
Yeah, yeah. So it could be a shorter time rather than a longer time.
He does have a hearing with the registry in a couple of days.
Don't go yet until we're done, if you would.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, I thought he was, I thought you were getting ready to leave.
I think...
I think he's ready to come sit.
On Thursday, right?
When, the 23rd.
Yeah, the 23rd, he has a hearing with the registry, which I don't know what's going to happen with that. That's to determine if he loses his dealer plates or not. But as far as the court goes, it really depends on the workload of Dudley District Court.
Yeah, but even Thursday, I mean, you know, we should really wait pending the outcome of Thursday's pre-trial, and then also pending the outcome once you file charges. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to say anything?
I'm here in support of Sturbridge Auto Sales.
Oh, no, I...
I mean, I'm here in support of them, because I...
Could you use the mic, please?
Sure.
She has to, I don't know. They need to sign it, too. Need to sign it.
Then on your way out, you can sign.
Sure. I'm here in support of Sturbridge Auto Sales.
Your name, please?
My name is Sarah Allers, and I am a customer, and I've known Bert Kasim for about 15, 16 years. And I've bought cars from him for my son, for me, my niece, and they've all, I've never had a problem with them. We've had family, people from my family that have helped him as, the best we could with the paperwork, and there's no malintent here. You know, he's always open with what he's selling us and what he's doing, you know? There's no malintent, as far as I know. And I've known him for a long time. He's got a lot of customers and clients in the area, from Munson to Ware to Sturbridge, Southbridge, Worcester. And people know that this is what he does. This is what he's been doing for 40 years. It's not, there's no clean titles. They all say rebuilt. I ran the Carfaxes today. If there's one that's clean, it wasn't Mr. Kasim's fault, it was DMV that probably, they didn't do the paperwork, right? It's a check mark that's this small. If you miss it, it comes back clean, and he doesn't know about it, because it goes to the customer. It's not like it comes to him and it's clean, and he's like, here's a clean title. Everybody in the area knows that Bert Kasim sells flood cars. So I'm just here to support him.
Well, we appreciate your kind words for him.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Please sign.
Madam Chair, can I ask?
Trooper?
Can I ask Mr. Kasim a question, please? How, how is it that you didn't have the lemon law notification in the windows of the car? Because almost every dealership, you know, this kind of dealership around has those in every vehicle that's for sale. And I find it awfully odd that you don't have them in the window of the cars.
They're a little yellow sticker.
Right.
I put them on there now. But I do give a lemon law. I have, I do, I give the lemon law every single time I sell a car. I have a lemon law that I give them, which is 30 days, 90 days, and 60 days, pending on the mileage of the vehicle. But I do give the lemon law with my cars when I sell them.
But you didn't have the stickers.
The stickers, I put them on, they're on the windows now.
He had the stickers, but you didn't have them on the window.
No, there seems to be a lot of, you do things now, but the problem is you hadn't done things, and you hadn't done them right. That's why we find us here, trying to decide what to do. Mary, do you have another question? Well, I guess I'm still, I still, with all due respect, whether it was intentional or not, I think you have a duty to go back and to those people you sold a car to where the title did look clean, you have a duty to notify them and indicate that they were not clean titles. I don't, I don't know that everybody who goes to Sturbridge Auto Sales knows that. And I guess what I am grappling with, with all due respect, is if an officer sat with you for an hour and a half and said not to continue a certain practice, it should have stopped immediately, notwithstanding that other sale. And I don't know, was there more than one car officer that you found after July 31st?
Ma'am, we're just finding out all the other cars, in fact, over the course of the last three or four years.
Okay, Trooper, excuse me, the mic, please. It's just the people at home. And since July 31st, so many cars...
There's a, over the course of the last three or four years, there's been the, several vehicles sold to the same person, gone through the same process. And it isn't even a matter of the car going to Vermont and having it stamped. He's circumventing the process that we have here. The car is from here, he's selling it from here. So it's going up there, only to go around the process to come back here to be sold. So the airbags have them in place. Those kind of things are important stuff. There's seatbelt retractors that we're talking about. And the inspection process itself is suspect there. Their own troopers told us that. So if we know that doing a good job inspecting the vehicles there, now what's happening is, when you have a salvage vehicle from Vermont, they're now being flagged at all registry branches. That, that happens, they have to be inspected here. But the person who buys the car is going to incur the cost of the inspection here in Mass before it can be registered.
And how many cars after July 31st?
Trooper, do you have that list of cars, or no?
No, she's starting to ask me.
We don't know yet, because Vermont hasn't gotten their paperwork caught up yet.
Is he saying there's only, I understand, he's saying there was only one other car. You can't verify that one way or another.
All I know is that I spoke to him on the 30th, and one happened a day later. And that means, though, here, that according to the registry, who, I work at the registry headquarters in Quincy, according to the registry, they came to my office the very next day and said, he sold another car dated today. So that's telling me that that day is when the transaction went through. So, and we had had the conversation the day before.
But the vehicle was already...
No, excuse me. Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, that, that car that was sold on July 31st, has that gone through inspection in Massachusetts?
I don't know in detail. Do you have that, Trooper?
The 31st?
I don't have that. I don't have it with me. I can't tell you, but I know, I was alerted to it, and I couldn't believe it happened, because we just had the conversation. I can find out.
Yeah.
Anyone else with questions on the board? Okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah. If we, if we move to suspend, would it be advisable to keep the hearing open until the court case is resolved, or...
No, because if we suspend or revoke or whatever, would be the conclusion of this public hearing.
Okay, and we'd have to have a new public hearing to revoke, or whatever.
To revoke our, you know, suspension.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify the process. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, then, here? And I just want to say, because would you two officers be present at a subsequent hearing to let us know what happened in the interim? You know, if we're going to vote to suspend tonight pending the outcome of your actions, will you both return to a subsequent hearing where we decide to lift the suspension or revoke, depending upon, you know, what's... Exactly.
Yes, ma'am. Do you mean the, only the court action, or do you mean the earlier RMV action?
Both.
The registry motor vehicles action will be soon.
Thursday. Thursday, but both. And then the court one.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, if, if the RMV removes his plates, he's pretty much done anyhow, so...
Okay, so does somebody want to make a motion?
To suspend, to suspend the license pending the outcome of the trial of the court case?
Motor vehicle registration hearing, and also any...
Court action?
Same criminal charges? Any court action that would occur.
Court action.
Any court action.
I'll second that.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor? Okay, 5-2-0 today. Okay, thank you for coming in. Trooper, thank you.
You're welcome, ma'am.
Okay, now let's...
Madam Chair, we'll keep all this material handy for a subsequent action by the board.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Now we have department heads watering sore. Fane?
Good evening, how you doing? Good. And you? Good. Summer's going quickly. Summer's going quickly, but there's been plenty of rain, so there's plenty of water, so that's a good thing. Well, that depends on where you sit during the day, I guess. I'll start with the monthly operation reports I've submitted for June and July, if there's any questions with those. Just on July, we didn't make the zinc limit? We didn't. I believe the last time I was here, I explained to you that we were switching chemicals. We switched from Feric to Ferris, and it just didn't work the way that we hoped. We've switched back to Feric, but it's going to take it to a couple sludge ages, probably till we start making permit again.
Also, I know in July, you took in 164,000 gallons of septicage from outside of town. Do you think that might have anything to do with it?
We don't, because we've been testing it all along, the septicage coming in. And we did open up to the smaller vendors. We did not open up to the big vendors, the ones that were bringing in all the 18-whealers. It's just two local vendors, and now we're just trying to bring in some revenue. So no, we don't believe that's, that's the reason, because the influent concentration hasn't gone up.
But the zinc limits were, previously, you tied them to the amount of septicage we, we had. And the septicage comes from, you know, private wells that, that we don't know what the...
So we agreed, we collectively, between Greg, Ty, and Bond, we agreed to try it. We don't believe that's the reason we're failing. We believe the reason we're failing is because we switched from the Feric to the Ferris. And it's coming down. I watch it every week. But the fact of the matter is, even if we, even if we don't take any septicage and we get back to this limit, the town's going to have to make a decision at some point whether you're going to do another multimillion dollar upgrade, or you're going to, you're going to fight, you're going to fight the permit limit. One sec. And then, so just, your permit expires, the application for your new permit has to be in for July 1st, 2019. At that point, would probably be when the town would make its case that, you know, the limit's just, in my opinion, it's not fair. That's my opinion. And we contested that limit when the permit came out the last time, and to no avail. So that's where we're at. If I, if I thought that the septicage coming in was the problem, we would have stopped it altogether.
Have you had any issues with toxicity testing?
We did, but not for the zinc. There was more species, and we were using a lab out of New Hampshire. We don't use that lab anymore. Since we switched, we haven't had any issues.
No.
And we actually passed toxicity when we had the Lyme incident, which was...
In July, we had, our toxicity test was okay?
We, it's in August. We just ran it last week.
Oh, you just ran it?
Just ran it. I don't have those results yet.
Okay.
It takes, the toxicity results take two, three weeks before they come back.
I just wanted to follow up with something Mike said, because I was under the belief that you suspended the, not the last time you were here, but a few meetings ago, you did say, or I thought you said, that you stopped taking outside septicage, and you would continue to do that while the zinc level was exceeding the limit. And I didn't think we were going to take from anybody, whether they're small and local, until our zinc level was back in compliance. So I'm a little surprised to hear that we're still exceeding our limit, but we're taking in other septicage. Because I thought you said you weren't doing that anymore, and there were several reports where, correct me if I'm wrong, we weren't taking in other septicage.
No, you're correct, and it was...
So I don't know why we stopped that.
It was to try and generate revenue. And it's revenue that's generated for the town. And it's, and honestly, it's more work for us, and it costs us more money in chemicals, but we have an obligation to try and bring in as much revenue as possible. I understand your concern with the zinc. I do.
Right, but you, but, but you did stop, what was your reason initially? You stopped taking outside septicage, because you said our zinc levels were exceeding what was allowed by law, and we weren't going to do it, and now we're back to trying to generate revenue, even though our zinc levels are up. I thought that it was going to stay just local until we got the zinc levels under control.
And the thought process was that, to open up to the small vendors first and see what happens, and that's what we did. We didn't open up to the wind rivers or the big 18-whealers coming in. And we can stop it, you know?
I thought we did. You know, I don't think when we, our zinc levels are exceeding normal limits, that we should be taking septicage from anybody else but Sturbridge. I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
I'll suspend it tomorrow.
No, this is my opinion only.
No, and I understand. I just, I don't want you to think that we just, um, you know, we're doing it for no reason. We're doing it to try and generate some revenue.
Yeah, I know.
And I, you know, when I talked to Greg about it and, and Ty and Vaughn, it's not a decision I just made on my own. It was something we thought, and again, we didn't open up to the big haulers. We're not, you know, you don't see the 18-wales coming in from all over the place like they did before. They used to, but they don't anymore.
Well, we did meet the limit in June, and we were still taking outside septage.
But then we switched.
But only 38,000 gallons, not 164,000 gallons.
Then you switched.
We switched to Ferris and we took in more septage. But we're, but we're watching the level coming into the plant, and that's what I'm telling you. It's not, it hasn't jumped way up.
I guess, I keep going back to, what was your reason for stopping the practice altogether? You must have had a reason for that as well.
We wanted to see what the zinc level, the concentration on the influent would do. I mean, honestly, the bottom line here is, this is not, this isn't gonna be a long-term solution. We can shut down septage, but at some point, you're gonna either have to go back to the regulators and make your argument and a case, or you're gonna have to do another upgrade. And I don't, and honestly, I don't see the rate payers being able to afford another upgrade.
I guess, I mean, I don't have a background in environmental law, but I just don't understand why we can't meet our limits with the ways, with the treatment plant that we have.
Because when the plant was being designed, there was never any mention from EPA or DEP that there was gonna be a zinc limit. It just showed up in the, in the draft permit. At no point in any discussions or any meetings that the town, Ty and Vaughn and myself had with them, did they mention a zinc limit. It was, it was never even brought up. And then the permit comes along and there it is.
Well, I mean, there must be zinc limits in other towns, in their wastewater treatment plants. I mean, we have a very good one. I mean, it's not very old at all.
I agree with, we have, I think that we have one of the best wastewater plants around, but I don't think everyone's held to the same limits. People, different places have different limits.
I think that was the point that he was trying to make, was that he thinks that the, I don't speak for Shane, but I think he's hoping that the town will contest the DEP limit with, with the DEP.
And it's two, it's two parameters. It's pounds per day and then daily max. We make the pounds per day, no problem. That's not an issue. It's a daily max that we, we struggle meeting. And even when we were making it, we were just barely making it. And so.
Well, what changed since we were just barely making it to now?
We switched to Ferris. We tried a different chemical. I explained that the last time I was here. So we had to try something. We're trying, we're just making the limit. We're trying to get rid of it altogether, and that was the point of switching to Ferris. And it just didn't work. And that's why now we're back to Feric.
And then we think we'll make the limit now that we're back to what we had.
We do, but again.
Okay, 'cause I personally, I will not vote in favor of upping our limits. I think the DEP has limits for a reason, and I don't, um, I am not gonna, I'm not going to agree to that. I'm gonna try to use our technology in a way that we don't have to go back to the DEP and say, relax our limits.
We've been trying to optimize.
I think that's, I think that's peddling backwards, especially with all due respect, when we're taking septage from other towns to raise money. I, I, I won't go back to the DEP. I wanna try to fall within the limits we have.
We've been trying to optimize that for the last year and a half. I mean, it's, it's not like we're not trying. We're trying. You know, and I think if the outside septage is gonna become an issue, then tomorrow I'll just shut it off. But I don't believe, look, it's not like we don't pay attention to what's coming into the plant.
Well, we've had a few violate, I mean, some of the outside septage, we've had a few violations. We asked to have it documented from now, like in the last year. Before that, we didn't even know if there were any violations coming in on our report. Now you report it to us, because we requested it. Um, I, look, I, I've personally never been in favor of taking outside septage and all the big tankers. It wasn't a decision that was made by the Board of Selectmen. It was made, and then the Board of Selectmen gave their blessing well after the fact. This was a different board.
Hey, but I didn't make that decision on my own either.
I'm not saying you did, Shane. All I'm saying, it was, it was not a policy decision that the Board of Selectmen made at our end. We were asked to bless it after the fact.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that was, that was with input from all the way to the experts.
Yeah. I, I have to explain why I chuckled a little bit when, when you said DEP must have a reason for setting the zinc limits. Well, they may have a reason, but they have a history. As example of Upper Blackstone wastewater treatment plant with, uh, and, and in Sturbridge here, we, uh, we hired a consultant to design a treatment plant to do a certain thing, and then EPA comes up with new rules, new, you know, to, new limits to meet. If they had told us before the plant was reconfigured to remove phosphorus, and, uh, maybe the, the, the plant could have been designed to lower the zinc limits more efficiently. I know several other wastewater treatment plants that, that are very new, that are undergoing limit restrictions that EPA just imposed after the fact. And it is a problem with EPA coming up with the criteria after the plant, the wastewater plant is designed and constructed. That's, that's, that's a big issue with EPA, is hitting communities after the fact, rather than being up front and saying, okay, you're redoing a, a new wastewater plant. This is the criteria you have to meet. They don't tell you that up front, and then they come up with it after the fact.
Well, regardless, when we don't have the documentation of what other towns' zinc limits are, I'm not gonna make any kind of off-the-cuff, um, letter to the DEP asking them to relax ours. I mean, we don't, we, we have no, we have no knowledge at this point what other towns' zinc limits are, what their capacities are, what is the risk of having too much zinc. Like, that's not a letter you just write, because we have a problem meeting it, so we want it just to be relaxed. I need to see some kind of facts about zinc and what other town, and if we're, if we're arguing that they're arbitrary and capricious about it, I wanna know what surrounding communities' zinc limits are, and whether ours are unreasonable in light of what other communities are managing to do with their treatment plants.
So, um, I would advocate to raise the rate, to raise it, and I'm gonna tell you why, because I don't have a whole lot of views for EPA sometimes. The mobile park here in Sturbridge was told that if they didn't do a wastewater treatment plant, they were gonna shut them down. Okay, now, we're looking at 200 places, 200 houses. So they had to, they went ahead, and they did it. They're one of possibly two mobile parks in the, in the state that did it. The others were defying the EPA regulation. They're still open. My point is that I don't think EPA is, holds the same standards all the time. I really don't. And I think it depends on the day of the week. I would advocate for extending it a little bit. Um, I don't think it's a big deal. Personally, I really don't. So I would advocate to see if we could raise the, the limits, uh, limits to a reasonable rate. Whatever you think is a reasonable rate to raise it.
But that's, I'm trying, that's what I'm trying to explain to you, is they did, we, the letter was written five years ago.
It's time to revisit it.
Ty and Vaughn wrote a letter, and it, it was, it was denied. We still got the limit. And I think what, one of the things that sticks out to me is you can have five times as much zinc in your drinking water than you can, than what's going out to the river. And it seems a little ridiculous, in my opinion.
Do you, do you have what other communities' zinc limits are?
I don't. I mean, it's, it's available. It's public information, but I don't know who has new permits and who doesn't. I mean, I can check places that we run. I know some places don't even have.
I would like, I would like some of those.
Some places don't even have a limit. It's just a report.
I would.
And one's in neighboring town.
Show us, show us some of that. I, I would like to know.
I will collect, I can collect the data on the places that we run.
Shane, also, switching back to your original treatment, we might see, you know, us making the limit again.
Yeah, and I do, like I said, I think it's gonna take one or two sludge ages till we, till we're making the limit again. I do believe we're making the limit again, but we're not removing it 100%. And I just don't think that the technology that we have, which is a very good technology, is gonna remove zinc. Again, we, and it's not, I don't, I don't think it's the town's fault. I don't think it's Veolia's fault. I don't think it's Ty and Vaughn's fault. Nobody knew.
Right. Agreed. Anything else? I'm sure you had a.
I have a question for you.
And one other thing, the perfect example, your community, we will not take your sludge. It's loaded with zinc. And there's, there's just one, so we do watch what comes into the plant. And yours came in and we tested it. We took it and it came back really high, and now we won't take it anymore. Same thing from the pilot.
Yeah.
This was coming in, we tested it, loaded with zinc. We won't take that anymore either. So I, I don't want you to think that we're not, that we're just opening up the floodgates, because we're not. We, we pay very close attention to what comes into the plant.
Shane, I have another question, and I'm asking it publicly so that you can explain it to the people who watch. I've been asked by several residents about a smell of chlorine in the water at different times, either at restaurants when they get the water at the table, or at home. Can you tell us why that happens sometimes?
Yeah. Um, so I'm aware of how the, that it made it on the Sturbridge community. I saw it, I read it. And it's two sides to every story. There's the side that you've seen, and there's the truth. So the woman that, a woman called and complained that there was a bleach smell in her water, and she had a six-month-old child, and she was concerned. I explained about how much we put in, and we went up and took a sample. We came back, the sample came in at .25. We're allowed by regulation to put in 4.0 milligrams per liter of chlorine. We don't even put in one. But when we go out and do our monthly samples, the chlorine has to be detected at the end of the system. So we have to add enough chlorine to make sure it's getting out there. You also have a well that's considering the influence of surface water, which means we're mandated to add enough chlorine to meet the surface water treatment rule. So I understand that the chlorine smell gets out there, and it's gonna happen, but it's also keeping the water safe.
Okay. That's, that's what I needed you to, to say to the people. That's what I wanted.
So I, like, I watch the community forums too, which is, and it's, and honestly, it's irritating, because half of what you're reading isn't true.
Absolutely. But, yeah, but.
And I understand people's concern.
By addressing it, this is why I wanted you to address it, because if you allow it to just perpetuate, then, then the lack of truth gets, keeps on going. That's why I'm asking you in public, so now it's recorded and stated in public of what you have said and explained. And I thank you for that.
Yeah, and the plant has a sophisticated gas system. The chlorine can't go out too low, and it can't go out too high, the plant shuts down.
Thanks, Shane.
You're welcome.
Okay, anything else, Shane? Anything else for us?
Um, just gonna be, you know, fall's coming. We'll be flushing hydrants, and we start an leak audit too, looking for water leaks. It's required by our Water Management Act permit. And then we'll start winterizing hydrants. That's pretty much all I have.
Okay, and all the hydrants are up and working?
We have one that we need to replace. Greg and I are working on it. It's from the 40s. Um, we've already fixed it twice. It's just in a really tough spot. Besides that one, to my knowledge, the rest are working.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Enjoy the rest of the summer.
You too.
Oh, yes. Greg?
Could we just, the new hires kind of first, and then they could?
Yes, they can leave.
Three out of four have showed up anyway, and, uh, Annie McDermott's here, Dave Lamontaine here, and Dan Jevasi's here. So there are three out of the four, Christopher Smith.
You wanna have him come up, or?
Yeah, could you come up and sit with Greg, please, in case anyone has any questions of you?
That's, Andrew, and Dan, Danny, and this is Dave.
Okay. Andrew, I'm kind of a pain in the neck about it, but could you please take your hat off?
Oh, definitely.
I went to parochial school. See, you're not bald, so you don't have to worry. Okay, Greg, go ahead.
So Andrew is recommended for the labor driver position. Uh, Dave is, uh, coming, would be the light equipment, a light equipment operator. And Danny would be the heavy equipment operator at the landfill. That's the, that was a, a post that was, has been empty for a while. And the other one, Chris Smith, he was a light equipment operator as well.
Okay, and what's the starting date you're asking for?
Andrew has to wait until the 10th, September 10th, but the rest of them could start September, anytime after the 3rd, September 3rd.
Okay, 4th is Labor Day, right, so?
Right.
Mm-hmm.
5th. Okay, any questions from the board?
I have a question about, um, one of the applicants had OSHA 10-hour training. The others?
Yeah.
Didn't. Are they gonna get OSHA 10-hour training before they work on a construction site?
Um, I don't know. That's a.
Well, you know, yeah, OSHA applies to DPWs now.
Yeah.
And.
We've been working with MYR, our insurance company.
Yeah.
Um, who are looking to create a training program on OSHA across the state, because this is a, this is something that all municipalities across the state are gonna have to deal with at some way, shape, or form. So it is something that is being rolled out to, to communities. I think they're in the process of developing those programs now.
Well, Bay State Roads, for example, offers a monthly OSHA 10-hour training, and I don't even think it costs anything. And it's something that, that's required before anyone can work on a construction site in Massachusetts. So I'd like to, you know, make sure that they all, they all get their OSHA 10-hour training. In, uh, was it Danny's, uh, application? You're, you're Daniel?
Yeah.
Uh, you know, you listed your CDL, but I don't see any hoisting licenses on the application form itself. I'm sure you have them, but.
He had one. He, he worked here originally, you know, years ago, and then he left, and.
Yeah, but I, there's nothing on the application form showing what, what licenses you have and, and so forth, and, um, and I think that was also the, the case with Christopher, but Dave, uh, is it David?
Yes.
David has listed all his licenses and so, and so forth on his application, so that's good. I just want, I, I just wanted to make sure that you had them, if they weren't listed on there or whatever, but the one that I know, most, most guys that come to work for a DPW, they don't have is an OSHA 10-hour, um, training, and you really should, it is, it, they get into trench safety and all kinds of things like that, and it's well worthwhile to, to go through that training. So, and it's required by state law as well, so.
I'd appreciate it if you do do that.
Yeah.
Professional development stuff, is, you know, as soon as you can. Just pointing it out here.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
I just wanna say it's great to have Dan back.
Thanks.
Yeah.
We missed you in Sturbridge. I know you, you are family moved to Arizona.
Arizona.
But you're back, so that's a good thing.
It's different out there, because we run heavy equipment every day. You know, they don't need the OSHA. They don't even need hydraulic license. I ran grades, all heavy equipment, no licenses at all, so I couldn't renew it, because you have to live in Massachusetts, so I had it up until a couple of years ago.
I mean, I mean, you did work for the DPW for 14 years, so.
Yeah, 14 years.
It's good to have you back.
Thanks.
Now what part of Arizona were you in?
Uh, City of Mesa.
Oh.
Mm-hmm.
About 550,000 people, 138 square miles, pretty big city.
Yeah.
Well, welcome back.
Thanks. Good to be back.
Okay, is somebody willing to make a motion? And I was wrong, Labor Day is the 3rd, not the 4th.
Yeah, I think it's the 3rd.
Yeah.
3rd. So it would be effective the 4th?
Yeah. Okay, do you wanna read the whole list? Because there were, for different things.
Hang on.
Do you have it, or?
Um, no.
I'll make, do you want me?
Go ahead, Mary.
Okay, I'll, I'll make, I'd like to make a motion that we employ the following people to the DPW. Andrew McDermott to be hired at step one as a labor dri, laborer driver. David Lamontet, Lamont?
Tane.
Lamontaine. Sorry, not French, but, to be hired at step one as a light equipment operator. Christopher Smith to be hired at step one as a light equipment operator. And Daniel Jevasi to be hired at step one as a heavy equipment, equipment operator, to take effect September 4th.
Okay, the first one is September 10th, did you say, Greg?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um.
Andrew.
Andrew McDermott to be effective September 10th, and the remaining three, September 4th. David Lamontec, Lamontaine, Christopher Smith and Daniel Jevasi effective September 4th, 2018.
Okay, is there a second?
Second?
Discussion?
Yeah. Uh, is it an equipment operator or a light equipment operator is the classification?
Those two are lights.
Light equipment.
Huh?
Those two are lights, and then.
Yeah.
Then Dan's heavy.
Okay, I, I didn't know that we had light equipment. I, I thought we had equipment operator and then heavy equipment operator.
No, it's just the, it's just, it, it's just the way it's been since forever, uh, you know.
Okay, I.
Just the terms we've been using forever, so.
Okay, 'cause I, I thought in the agreement, it said equipment operator and heavy equipment operator was the job, the job description that we have.
You're saying that the word light is not found in the agreement?
It's not in the job description, I don't think. It's, I think the job description says just equipment operator. I look.
Either way.
Whatever.
Six, one, half dozen of another.
Six, one, half dozen.
But that's, that's what you mean, is the equipment operator.
That's what I mean, yeah.
Heavy equipment operator. Okay.
Okay, did we vote?
I'll say.
You didn't vote.
Who's second in it?
I did.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, gentlemen, good luck.
Yes, and thank you for coming in on short notice, but we never know what questions we might have. Okay, thank you.
Stay safe.
Thank you.
Good luck, everybody. Thanks.
Yeah.
Basically for reports, the, the six-month report was, uh, added up. Road maintenance, road, uh, road maintenance, construction, uh, equipment maintenance, and storm-related work is 56% of our time. Cemetery, border health, park and rec, water work, sewer work, town hall, scene center, and library, either 20% of our time. Off, basically off-hours, away from, uh, it's off-time that's still needs to be accounted for as a, as a benefit. 14% of the time. Building maintenance, uh, private maintenance, private road maintenance, sidewalk maintenance is roughly 4% of the time, and professional development, historical committee, the AM inspection, and safety complex work is, um, almost 5%. So it's, it's pretty consistent over the last, well, probably 10 years. The, you know, the, the first three, the, the first three, I'd like to see that, I've said it before, I'd like to see that number higher, but. You know, the, the first three, the first three, I'd like to see that, I've said it before, I'd like to see that number higher, but it's been pretty consistent in the 50s.
Yeah. Yeah, I noticed that professional development is zero, and maybe this OSHA training would be, spend a few hours for professional development on that, and I don't know what else you do for safety training and that sort of thing, but there should, we should be-
They had a chainsaw, I think that was last fall, they had a chainsaw, everybody took, we have flagging, which is not a yearly thing, but-
But, but all those things-
Licenses, all their heavy hydraulic licenses, different training, you know, you gotta-
Yeah, you gotta go to training and stuff, so-
All that, so.
So, I think, you know, I think-
I mean, that's not a big deal.
Yeah.
If I could weigh in, Madam Chair, I think part of the training regimen for the DPW is seasonal, meaning that you do certain types of trainings during different times of the year, so that if we're, you know, for example, I think we did the chainsaw training, didn't we do that like six months ago in the wintertime?
It was in the fall, yeah, it just, I actually, it snowed, um-
One of the days.
One of the days they were working, yeah, it was a-
Yeah.
Yeah, so we, I think that what the DPW director needs to do is, is plan his training so that, you know, we wouldn't want to be doing that kind of training in the middle of our construction season.
It didn't seem as long ago as the fall, because they were in here, right?
They did it here, right, we hosted.
Yeah, but, I thought it was the spring, but-
It snowed, I know that, I remember it.
Yeah.
Actually, I think you're right, I don't think it was the fall, I think it was the spring, but-
I had the guys go see, and I remember that.
Whatever, and, you know, I know you are doing some professional development, that, that chainsaw safety thing was a good thing.
Yeah, very good.
I know you do flagging and stuff, and, so, that's, that's good, but keep it up.
Yep. Uh, June, the June report, the only, there was, there was an error, and it said, raise seven structures and pull the road edges on Brookfield Road, that should have been Potunk Road. Brookfield Road is yet to be done, that'll be coming actually in the next week or two. We're trying to get that ready for paving, there was some, some catch space and work there. A lot of superficial stuff, but it still has to be done.
I, I do have a question about the, under the border health item there, you, you cut some brush on Cedar property for perches for the Habitat for Humanity?
Yes. We did two lots, one was 226, and you know, I think it was 284, and subsequently to this, we have perched them, and 284 is, it wouldn't pass, and the 226 one would.
It would?
Yeah, it did.
So, yeah.
We'd need a different type of system, though. It was, it passed, but it wasn't, we're not jumping up and down about the results.
Well, it wasn't, you know, it was funny, it was like a split, it was, it was definitely like a split perk. One, the first hole was like, we had, there was two verticals and four deep holes, and it was a lot of digging. But, uh, one was like 23 minutes per inch, and the other one was like 48 minutes per inch. So, even though they were 20 feet apart, it was a considerable difference in time-
In perk, yeah.
In the perk, but it was no ledge, you know, no ledge present, no, a fairly high modeling line on the holes, but-
Yeah, my, my question actually was, would it be appropriate to bring our housing partnership people? I know last time they were involved with Habitat for Humanity when, and I just wanted to, I didn't know this was going on, and we had, we know we do have a housing partnership, maybe we should share some of this information and bring them up to speed on what's going on with the Habitat project, or whatever.
I don't know if they've even been approached by it, but the, the thought being that, that these, these were two lots owned by the town.
Yeah.
The upper one, due to, it's just the way the lot is, and it's a pretty close proximity, a wetland's fairly close, and it's not a big elevation difference from the wetland to the front of the lot.
Maybe, maybe I can fill in a blank here, too. So, these two lots that we're talking about on Cedar Street were retained by the town years and years ago for the purpose of having potentially a Habitat for Humanity home on it. Recently, the representatives from Habitat for Humanity came to meet with me to talk to me about the possibility of doing another project in the town. And they were interested in looking to see if these were even buildable lots that they could do something with. That's how we ended up doing the test, just to make sure we knew what we were working with. The new housing partnership is aware of this project, is aware of the situation, and in September, when the gentleman from Habitat Humanities comes back to the region, he's intending to meet with them to talk about the project based on the results that Greg is talking about.
Okay.
So, we're, we are closing that loop.
So, you did, you are, were on it, and they, and-
I just dig holes.
Housing partnership knows about it, that's all I-
We just dig holes, we don't do that stuff.
This is the first I saw of, of the perk test and the Habitat, and I'm going Habitat for Humanities, it's-
I mean, there still could be a year or two before we even make any progress.
Sure, 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 I just wanted to make sure we were working together, partnership and all that.
Okay, anything else for Greg?
Just real quick, Greg, I saw the pickup trash on Fitzkillen Route. Down by that truck stop, you're constantly there, you guys are there all the time, but we have such a problem with those trucks coming off 84, and it's, it's nothing that the town is doing, it's just these trucks are, these guys could be there on a Monday, and on Tuesday, it looks like nobody ever went there. Yeah. And I was just wondering if we could, like, put some signs up, or maybe the town write a letter to Pilot saying, "Look, we got, we got a problem down there."
No, the planning board always gets reports, too, and they're always on top of it. Because they, they in the past-
Yeah.
Several times have sent letters to Pilot.
Okay.
You know, hey, get out there and pick it up.
Yeah. But it is, it's kind of an issue, you know, they, they have a dumpster, but the thing's locked, and so, there's not, it's not accessed by the- Right. Their patrons, so, you know, it's, they, as soon as they come out of their parking lot, it's phew, 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 and, uh, I don't think that's right either, you know, you've got a dumpster, you-
Let the planning department know that, they maybe don't know it's locked.
Oh, well, it is.
Yeah, they maybe don't know.
You know, I know it is for a fact, so.
Well, somebody could tell Gene.
I know somebody who can tell him.
That'd be great.
Are you?
Yes.
Yes.
Telling him now.
Yeah, because I know I've been at meetings where they-
Unbelievable.
They review.
And, you know, a lot of people don't really go down that end of town, it's kind of, you know, an abandoned area.
But I'm amazed at where people-
Oh.
Throw, I was at Hearthstone Marketplace, and some guy drove in, backed his car up, took two trash bags out and put it in their dumpster, got in the car, went, I know we've had trouble here, too.
Yeah, yes, we have.
Yeah.
Anything else for us?
I don't know, that's it.
Okay, oh, my question, the weeds in the sidewalk.
Oh, yeah.
There was a little snafu in scheduling, I believe, but we were told that it was supposed to be started this week, so.
Yeah, now, who does it?
I was supposed to get a, huh?
Who does it for us? Do you guys do it yourself?
No.
No, I didn't think so.
We have a contractor, Northern Tree.
Yeah, yeah, because some of it's knee-high to me, which-
But you guys do the streets, right, and on our, on, on our streets, like our roads?
roadside trimming, you're talking-
Roadside trimming?
No, roadside brushing.
You do that, though, right, yeah, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, because I know, front of the public house, it's nice.
I think they do their own.
Oh, yeah, they pay for their own bricks.
Yeah.
No, it was, it was originally scheduled in, you know, the end of June, and wait till July, and okay, and then here we are in August.
Yeah, well, the weather's been great for it to grow.
It's, it's certainly weedy.
Yeah, okay, thanks, Greg.
You're welcome.
Okay, Rebecca?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, we just got your report.
Yes, sorry. Do you want me to read it, or?
No, the highlights, I think. The highlights, yeah. But, you know, maybe if you could work on getting it to us, even like the Friday before, just so we can read it over if we have questions.
I apologize.
Oh, yeah, no problem, no problem.
So, I, I kind of, I mean, this is the first time that I've, I've done one of these reports, so I kind of modeled it after past ones that the previous agent did, so I just kind of went through who our board is, who's currently in what positions. Kind of indicated that Glenn Colborne retired this year, we also lost Ann Reno Jones, our administrative assistant, in April. She retired as well, in late May, we hired Ashley P. Schick to fill the position, we've been getting her up to speed. It's been a real help to have someone back in that position. We have been meeting twice a month, on Thursdays, through the summer, we went down to one meeting a month. We'll be going back this coming month to two meetings a month, we're going to start trying our meetings on Tuesday nights, alternating with the planning board and see how that works out, we're going to do a trial for a couple of months. So, then I just kind of got into, at our meetings, I didn't know, we provide a walk-in period for potential project proponents, where it's, you know, anyone that has a potential project that they're interested in doing, or an idea and wants to find out about the regulations and how the project could fit into it, we provide them the opportunity to come to our public meeting, talk about it, and get that feedback. So, I just gave an example in here of a project that kind of went through this process, which was really helpful. This was a potential development plan for a nine-hauling road, someone who was interested in buying the property. It actually, I mean, I kind of, in the next paragraph, go into that a little bit, we provide guidance through our department, I can meet with people and talk to them about potential plans, so that kind of started as that process, where the potential buyer for the property came in with an engineering firm, we looked at a couple iterations of plans, worked to revise things to where it would meet our performance standards under the Wetlands Protection Act and the local bylaw. So, once we kind of got to that point, they went, they worked with planning board a little bit, too, we then brought it as this kind of informal filing to the Conservation Commission, and they were very accepting of that plan. So, we're happy to see that we could work towards something that would be good for the applicant and meet the standards for our permits, so we're happy about that, I think that was a successful pre-filing consultation, I like to call it.
Can I just ask, nine-hauling road, is that the abandoned factory?
Correct, yeah.
Oh, nice, and what, what, I know it was just a walk-in, but what is being proposed there?
Um, so it's going to meet the commercial tourism district requirements, too, so it's going to be a mixed use, potential condos and retail there, potentially maybe a small restaurant as well with outdoor seating. We, it was kind of proposed, but, I'm sorry?
There's some office space on the forest.
There's going to be a potential river walk, which will help connect people along the river, towards the Grand Trunk Trail, et cetera, so.
Awesome, what kind of timeline, I mean, that's such a visual blight.
I don't know, I don't even know if the person's bought the property at this point, but-
That would revitalize that whole block.
Yeah, yeah.
They had a good presentation at the planning board on it, but it's like anything else, it's in the beginning stages.
Yeah, then I-
Buying and financing and all that.
Right, and, and the concept plan that we saw might change a little bit, from my understanding, but they, you know, got a good idea of exactly what we would kind of need to see in order to meet our permit standards, and they were receptive to that, so.
Then it, yeah, at the planning board, the, the concept was to have it look like 1890s smell, or-
Kind of looked like the AO.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And then there was a second building, which would have been closer to the river, but not too close, so, and they'd have an outdoor seating area to have the, kind of the vista of the river there, so. So, then I just kind of went through, and I didn't know, too, just kind of give a summary of, you know, the different types of applications that we receive in our department for review. We review notice of intents, request for determination of applicability, abbreviated notice of resource, resource area delineations, those are all state filings under the Wetlands Protection Act, we review under that act in our local bylaw. We also look at forest cutting plans, we have two different types of wetland bylaw letter permits for tree cutting, we do an expedited process for that, and then we also have our wetland bylaw letter permit application, that's kind of an expedited process as well. So, since July 2017, we've reviewed 22 notice of intents, 20 requests, requests for determinations of applicability, three ANRads, that's the resource area delineation, and 55 letter permits for a total of 100 projects. Looking back at the past years, since 2013, it's been kind of a steady increase in our filings that we've seen in the department. We did see a slight decrease in notice of intent filings, and I think this is because we've been seeing more requests for determination of applicabilities. So, there's a lot of smaller projects that people can call in about, and if it's something small and it's in the outer extent of our 100-foot buffer zone, we don't need to see it as a notice of intent. And sometimes people file those, it's kind of more of a cumbersome process to go through, because you have to get orders of conditions, there's recording at the registry of deeds, you have to receive a permit, which is another 21 days, and then at the end, you do a certificate of compliance request, and then you have to record that at the registry of deeds. So, some of these smaller projects, DEP kind of recommends that we try to streamline them through this RDA process. Still requires butter notification, legal ad, going to a public hearing, but you don't have to go through the orders of conditions process. So, we usually can permit that and give it conditions to still, you know, meet the performance standards and protect the resource areas. So, I mean, I see this as a benefit to project proponents, as it saves them time and money, and still protects the resource areas, so I would attribute it to that. And then I just wanted to include some of the larger applications that we've recently reviewed. The Blue Wave Solar Project came back with a new filing, they had three culverts that originally proposed to be replaced, they had to do a new filing, we worked with them, and made some improvements on the site. So, there's a perennial stream that was, the culvert was failed, we were able to have them upgrade that to a three-sided box culvert, which is a big improvement, I think it was a three-foot crushed round culvert. So, we made improvement there, they improved an intermittent stream, and another failed culvert set, the whole thing was taken out and restored. So, I saw that as a definite benefit for our resource areas, keep stream connectivity, and it's better habitat for different organisms in there, so that that was a good improvement, that's ongoing as we speak right now. We recently just permitted the Petrogas, gas station project, if you're familiar with that, it's the mobile station on Route 15. There is over 700 feet of a culverted, culverted, buried perennial stream underneath that. Where currently stormwater is being discharged into that stream, we worked with them to revise that project to daylight a portion of that. They also daylighted a portion of a intermittent stream, and there's wetland restoration work being done, and they made significant improvements to stormwater there, which then, that travels down, ends up into the Quinabon River. So, we saw that as a, a big improvement, we were able to help make. Another big project that recently came through was the campground redevelopment project at 30 River Road, that first came to us as a resource area delineation, and they were looking to do aquatic vegetation management of Pine Lake there. We were able to review and approve that in one meeting for them, to help keep that moving forward. They're starting their aquatic management next week. And then, we just approved last week, at our second meeting with them, the redevelopment of the campground project. So, we'll be issuing a permit for that in the near future for them. Some of the smaller projects that we've seen, we had construction of five new single-family homes, four raise and rebuilds of the cottages on the lakes. You know, some of the, I just tried to include a little bit of a summary of some of the things we see, you know, house additions, septic replacements, docks, pools, retaining wall replacements, commercial properties and residential landscaping. There's been an increase on the tree removal applications due to the gypsy moth damage on the trees, so we've been reviewing and approving those. And then also, I mentioned it earlier, we issue certificates of compliance for completed projects, so at the end of their project, in order to get their orders of conditions off of the registry on their deed, they have to submit a request for that. So, we have to go through all of these older projects, look at the conditions, go out, do a site visit, confirm that they've properly completed their project. I think we, yeah, we issued approximately 50 in the past year. We recently just issued, last week, one from the 1980s, which is kind of unusual, but sometimes when people are going to sell properties, it hasn't been caught in the title search before, and now it comes up, so that was interesting.
Yeah.
The 69th orders of conditions issued for Sturbridge, so. Predated some of my commission members.
A few.
Not all of them, but.
Not all.
So, and I just wanted to include- So, and I just wanted to include, too, you know, part of my position is, once I issue a permit, or I draft a permit and it's issued, I then have a lot of work that I do with the project proponents. So they're going to get ready to start their project. So there's conditions for pre-construction conditions, during work, after work, and there's some perpetual conditions. So it's important that we have really good communication with them at that point in time, and make sure the whole project team, whoever the contractors are, are aware of the conditions to kind of keep the project on track and moving forward without any issues. So that's a big area in our department that I see that we can kind of do a better job at in making sure that, you know, people are aware of these conditions so that we don't end up with any violations and any issues, or cease and desist, which can hold up our project. So I've been trying to work with developers and their project teams to make sure that there's that clear understanding. So that could involve multiple site visits, compliance checks throughout, you know, just staying on top of emailing and checking in. I found that that's a big part of my job. So also, just wanted to give you an update on some other things that we've been working on. Still working on updating the wetland bylaw regulations. Over the summer, we've kind of decided to stop working on them. We were waiting on feedback from town council over the spring, which we got in about May, and I had new staff person coming in, and then we went to our summer schedule. So we're resuming working on those this September and moving forward, reviewing the town council comments, and hoping that we can get that moving forward and do our required public hearings and revise those. We've also been working on identifying opportunities on our conservation properties to better manage them, develop management plans, identify what we need to be meaning working on, forest management plans, invasive species control, habitat enhancement projects, trail development, et cetera. So working to kind of go through the properties and kind of outline those type of things, look at funding mechanisms, grants, et cetera, to help assist with those things. We're removing some dilapidated structures on our properties that are hazards. So that's one thing we've been working on a little bit, and recently went to the community preservation committee to help seek some funds to have those removed, as the cost was a little more than anticipated with asbestos in there. Some things that, we had a WIP grant before for early succession habitat management that expired over the past couple of years. So, I mean, some of the properties have been being maintained a little bit, but we're looking at grant opportunities there, too, with fish and wildlife, to pursue funding for those type of things. So we don't have to ask for the town to do it. Currently, DPW's been assisting us with that, with money in their budget, so. This year, we issued our first restoration orders of conditions for the Hamid Brook Restoration Project, which I'm sure you're familiar with. That started work in October of 2017. We're working with them to develop some interpretive signs down there, kind of outlining the project in design, et cetera, and reasons for the project. So we've been working, Ashley and myself, on that. We're hoping that we can submit something to them soon, because there will be a Walktober event there in October going over that project. Lakes monitoring was conducted on the 27th and 29th of this year, and that's done by volunteers and through the Sturbridge Lakes Advisory Committee, but the Conservation Department funds that out of our budget. The results came in, but the report hasn't been written yet. So over the past couple of years, though, it's received a good health report card. So we're happy about that. And then just, we're members of the Mass Association of Conservation Commissions, and we've been going to the conferences for that and different workshops to kind of stay current with conservation-related matters, so.
Busy.
Any questions, Priscilla?
Okay, yeah, I have a question for you. Do you have a list in your, in your work of areas that might be violating wetland restrictions or anything like that? Or is it just, if it comes to your attention? I mean, are there properties you watch, or?
Well, we try to keep track of our ongoing projects that have permits. That's something that the office has never really had a spreadsheet of.
Yeah, I was just curious.
So I've been keeping track of the projects that have been permitted since I've been here, and if I know that we've had recent big storm events like we have, I'll try to go out and just take a look at the erosion controls to make sure they're okay. I mean, that is one place I think there is an opportunity to do a better job of keeping track of project compliance. If, if there's an issue, there's not areas that we would look at besides things that are on our permit list.
Oh.
Sometimes we do get calls from the public that might say, "I saw this," or I think this person might be doing something. I mean, I'll search through our records and see if we have any permits there, or what kind of history the department might have.
Okay.
And then go from there, so.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I just had a couple of things. First, I noticed that you said you are going to be looking to amend your bylaw regulations.
Yes.
And you said that unexpected delays from town council, and that just kind of caught my eye. Reasonable unexpected delays, or?
It took about three months to get a reply. So we had comments in February, and it just took a long time for them to look at it and get back to us. So it took about three months to.
Which isn't really reasonable. Did you send, like, follow-up?
We did, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
What was the reason? Were they in transition?
I don't know if they were just busy or not.
Okay, I mean, just three months to get back, it seems very unreasonable to me. I don't know. It might, maybe it fell through the cracks, or?
No, that's fair.
So just, I mean, in the future, let our, I mean, I'm sure you talked to Leon about it, but, oh, okay, yeah. Let whoever is the interim, too, because that's how we kind of keep track of council, too. And then I just had a question. I know, like, a lot of support for a dog park. Have you had any preliminary conversations with the Trails Committee? Because I know that conservation would be, have to sign off on it, right?
Yeah, I've talked to Tom Chamberlain a little bit, and Annie, the rec director, we've talked about that, thinking about potential property, properties that could meet that need. Some of the bigger properties have the conservation restrictions on them, where that would probably not be in allowed use, because putting up the fence would be considered a structure, or it might not allow for parking or whatnot, so.
Oh, so passive recreation would not, if the CR said passive recreation only, that's, doesn't allow a dog park?
The biggest issue would be.
The fence.
Fence. That would be the kind of the.
Usually a dog park is enclosed.
Oh, I, I know, I know. But I remember when we wanted to do soccer, that if the fence, under Erin Jock, she said if the fence gets, it's a temporary fence, gets erected and then taken down, I didn't know if there's some way, because most of our land, other than like riverlands, is limited to passive recreation, which is very unfortunate.
And I think it comes down to the allowed uses for structures, too. So I don't know that it wouldn't fit the passive recreation. I'm not sure of the definition for that, but it's, it's the construction of the fence.
Even if it's a fence that is not permanent?
I don't know. I don't know if it's temporary.
Because that's what the soccer fence was going to be, a not-permanent one, in order to. So where have you discussed having?
We talked about Shepherd, Plimpton Property. Those were a couple that we talked about. We thought.
Now, Shepherd is limited to passive.
Right. And I don't think you could put a fence up there either, but.
Right. So, so Shepherd would probably be out.
We do have some other smaller properties. I don't know, I mean, some of the concerns would be that it would be in residential areas. There could be concerns. One idea that would be nice would probably to be have it, have it located near trails, so people could go walk on the trails with their dogs, or go to the dog park area. I don't know what Riverlands allows, but that might be nice with the Grand Trunk Trail going through. It's one thing we've kind of, we've been discussing some different ideas, so.
Well, Riverlands allows active recreation. That's one of the few lot, that's one of the few parcels that we have that does.
Right.
So I just, I didn't know if they narrowed it, like, how far along they got with that.
No.
There's a lot of residents that would like that.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I'm hoping that we move a little more aggressively forward, whether it's the Trails Department, or REC, or?
I think REC is working on it, from my understanding. They've been doing some research and talking, or we're going to talk to their committee at the next meeting to discuss that. And I said I'd be happy to help her with that, so.
If I could make a suggestion, this is just from other communities that have gone through this process. You know, if there's a group of residents out there in the, you know, who are interested in doing a dog park, I think that, you know, working among themselves to kind of lay the groundwork. I know that several of the communities that I'm familiar with, even where I've been helping the Ware Dog Park Committee do this in the town of Ware, they have grants out there that are available. They have planning grants, fundraising grants. They really, there's a lot of opportunities to get funds for these types of municipal dog parks. And a lot of times, planning committees can be helpful in keeping that ball kind of moving.
I mean, thank you, Leon, but I don't know if funding's the issue as much when we have CPC money. I think it's more finding the land. And I think that has to start, I think residents would be overwhelmed by the CRs, this, that. I think it needs to start at one of our committees. I mean, because the Trails Committee is, are putting trails in, and to me, that would go hand in hand with some of those open space areas. So, I mean, I, I understand, but I think that it needs to start with one of our town committees that's already in place.
Mm-hmm.
But, all right, I'll talk to Annie.
Right. And I've said I'd help her, you know, look at things, too. So, one other thing I forgot to say was that we did sponsor our Thursday cleanup again this April, and we actually reached out to the schools, and that was really beneficial. We got some families involved. So we did have a good response. I'd like to try to maybe do some more things like that throughout the year in conjunction with DPW, but also look at some educational opportunities, getting our schools, schools involved and things with our conservation properties, too, so.
Sounds good. Anything else from the board?
I'd like to thank you for the work you did on the, the gypsy moth damage assessment there. That, I presume that's pretty much over, and we're going to be looking at the amount of money it's going to cost to, to correct this situation sometime sooner.
It's a little bit more than $15, I think, to fix it.
I, I think it is. I think it would be. But, you know, notably in the last storm or two that we've had, there's been lots of branches and stuff coming down, and most of it's dead stuff. So I'd, thank you for the work you've done, and we've got to keep, just as a reminder, we got to keep going on that, that issue.
You'll begin the presentation from the tree warden.
Yeah.
Probably in the next two meetings is more than likely. I think we're waiting on the final report to be generated on that. I don't think I received that.
I wasn't very involved in that. I think you're thinking of the other Rebecca that was involved.
Yeah.
Oh, oh.
I was wondering.
I'm sorry. That was Rebecca from Planning.
As the rule, you always accept.
Well, thank you, Rebecca from Planning.
I'm going to spread it here.
Rebecca from Sunnybrook.
I will.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, I.
That's okay.
Got that confused. The, the other thing, you mentioned something about a dilapidated building or something, or falling down, and there's some issues with it, maybe asbestos and stuff. What specifically were you talking about?
So we have a variety of buildings on different properties. So on Heinz's property, there's an old cabin, which is located right next to one of our trails out there now. So there's that one. On the Plimpton property, there's where the Christmas Tree Farm was, there's a red shed down there. And then on Lead Mine, we have three small outhouses left over from the camp, and then a very large stable that's still there. So the Conservation Department in the last fiscal year had asked for some funds to start working on removing those. So when I started, I was informed of that and to start working on that. Quickly uncovered the need for asbestos survey. So we used our funds to have all of those properties tested for asbestos. They all came back positive, some more than others. We also started working on figuring out quotes of what it would cost to have that removed, just to have someone come in, like a construction company to come in. A lot of them have limited access, which will increase the cost, not only for the asbestos removal, because they need special equipment to be brought out there, but also the removal of the rest of the materials. So we've been working on putting costs together for that. And then we went to Community Preservation Committee to try to move forward, at least on one of those properties in the near future. So on the Plimpton property, that one has the easiest access. So we've had, we have a quote to have the asbestos removed, and then DPW, provided they're not busy at the time, will come out and take that building down for us, so hoping that we can move forward.
This has been a priority of mine since I've arrived here, when I discovered the locations of these outhouses and so on, and so outbuildings. I'm concerned because, you know, this could be a liability to the town. If a group of people, I will say, decide that make this a location for a party, or things like that, we have, you know, potential for liability. Even if the buildings are somewhat secure, they are remote buildings, and it could be weeks before we would know what was going on in there. So, you know, our priority was, was, you know, I started working with Glenn, and when Rebecca came on board, I started working with her as well. We had monies in this current year's operating budgets to do some work towards this, but we quickly realized that we're needing more. And that's why her efforts with the CPC is very well placed.
Yeah. Okay, yeah. Well, that's, it's good to know that, that you're working on that, because, you know, I knew there were some, some buildings around, but I didn't realize how many there were.
Okay. Thank you, Rebecca.
You're welcome. I just have one other thing. So we just had a farmer's market meeting, and we are extending the market one day to October 7th, and we don't have anyone for the community table. I know that there was some interest expressed, maybe the Board of Selectmen would like to be there. It'll be our last farmer's market for the season. So I just, I told them I was coming over here, so I would ask.
October 7th?
Yeah.
So that if the Board of Selectmen is able, or willing or able to come to the farmer's market for the day. I will tell you, I've been to four out of, how many have you had now? Seven?
Seven, I think.
I think, seven. And, including yesterday.
You go to the, yeah.
It was such a great wonder, it was such a beautiful day, and got, my daughter got ice cream for breakfast, so she was very, very happy. But it's been such a, I keep hearing from people, even people who don't live in town, how wonderful the farmer's market is. And, and the committee should be commended, and the Special Events Committee, absolutely, for spearheading this effort, should be commended as well. What a great addition to the town.
So we'll give it some thought and look at our calendars.
Let us know.
It's a long weekend.
Yeah.
Yeah. Columbus Day weekend.
It is Columbus Day weekend.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Enjoy the rest of the summer.
Thank you.
It's dark out, though.
I know, huh?
I don't like it.
I don't either.
Okay, next we have town administrators update. But before we do that, Bert, the gentleman from Burton Engineers was away. That's why he didn't show up tonight. So we'll need to continue the public hearing to September 5th at 6:35. So is somebody willing to make that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, now your update.
All right, I'll get you back on schedule. I would ask the Board of Selectmen to concur with the resignation of Eric Rondina from the Police Department as a part-time patrol officer. He is, he is.
Going to the Cape.
Taking his new position as a full-time patrol officer in Yarmouth.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
I would ask that the Board of Selectmen accept the resignation of Tyler Bressi as a full-time dispatcher effective August 27th, and to further accept Tyler as a part-time dispatcher effective August 27th.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor? Yeah, he's a police officer with Worcester State University.
Correct. At the last, at a previous meeting of the Board of Selectmen, the Selectmen spoke about creating a policy governing one-day liquor licenses. And at the last meeting, the Selectmen asked me to prepare a draft policy based upon some research that I've been able to do with other communities, on what their one-day liquor license policies might look like. Now, there's not, hasn't been a lot of these that I've been able to put my fingers on. However, in your agenda package, I've, I've taken the liberty of drafting a sample one-day liquor license policy based upon some of the comments and requests that came in from other communities. I went so far as to create a special application. This was actually something that Deborah and I, when Deborah was the administrative assistant here, were talking about doing, creating a special one-day liquor license application. As you know, really. As you know, really, we didn't have a special application just for one-day licenses, and, you know, we tried to use the generic license to kind of fill in the blanks, and it was really not working well. I don't think it was working well for the board. It certainly was difficult for us to track what was being requested, and for when, and for how long, and so on and so forth. So, I did take the liberty of creating a brand-new application for a special one-day liquor license, and I bring it to your consideration here tonight. I know that you're just looking at this today. If you folks have had a chance to look at it and you were agreeable, you could vote to add this to our Selectmen's policy book and to implement this moving forward, or if you want to carry this over to the next meeting so that you can have a little bit of time to look at it, we would be happy to do whatever you wish.
Okay, what's, what's, Priscilla?
I have some questions, if I could ask them now. First, let me ask this first. If a organization wanted to do a one-day event and they got a one-day liquor license, this rule would apply to them too, correct?
It would be for all one-day liquor licenses.
Okay, yeah, I wanted to clarify that, because there's a couple of things here, and I'm thinking from my own church, when we do a one-day event and we need a liquor license. It says that special licenses must be purchased, must purchase their alcohol from a licensed supplier, and they can't buy it, can't purchase alcoholic beverages from a package store. Now, if the package store can give them the best deal on what they need, why can't they buy it from a package store? It's a licensed vendor.
It's a state law. It's not, it's not a town law. That's not a town bylaw. That's a.
Because all communities don't, don't do that.
Well, I'm not gonna say they all enforce that.
Okay.
But, but the answer is, but that goes back to Mass. General Law.
Okay, well, that's good to know. Thank you for that. The other thing is, is it also a state law that whoever pours that day has to be tip-certified, even if it's a one-day event?
I don't know the answer to that question. I think that that's something that we've talked about with other folks that have come before you, whether or not the servers have been tip-certified, and I've noticed it in other towns' policies as well. So, I did include that. I can look into whether or not that's part of Mass. General Law.
And I'm just basing it on a town where I get my permit from, and none of this is on there. That's why I'm asking this, you know.
Well, until recently, it wasn't on our policies either, because we didn't have one.
Yeah, well, right, we never had a policy, but when I go to the, when I go to the community to get my liquor license, none of this is there, and that's why I'm just curious on all that.
I can check on the tip certification.
The sketch, yes. The sketch, in fact, they have a one-page application, and on the back, they let you sketch it, right on the back.
That's on Mass. General Law as well.
And so, that piece, that part is there, but this, and the police have to sign it, that's also part of it, but these two things are not, and that's why I was just wondering. You tell me one is state law, I'm just curious about the tips, if it's a, if it's an organization that's doing a one-day fundraiser, it's not always easy to find someone to.
May I ask you a follow-up question? Are you talking about serving alcohol or for drinking purposes, or are you talking about buying a bottle and going home with it?
No, serving it at a function with a bar, serving it at a function.
Yes, yes.
Where you charge for it, right?
Right.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, if you look at the policy where it says the local licensing authority cannot grant special licenses, that all comes directly from Mass. General Law.
Okay.
The licensed supplier comes from Mass. General Law. In fact, you may recall last year when you folks issued a one-day liquor license to the Hamilton Rotting Gun Club, we actually had this conversation with them because we made sure that they knew that that was Mass. General Law. We actually talked about it at the meeting. I don't, I don't recall if the tips goes back to Mass. General Law or not, but I will look into that, and I'll get you an answer for your next meeting.
I know if you have a bar, and it's a, it's a, it's, you open it, let's say, one day a week, and it's a small organization, I know that, that they need to be tip-certified, but I'm just wondering if somebody does a once-a-year event, do they need tip-certified?
Okay.
I don't know.
I can, I can, I don't know the answer off the top of my head, but I'll get you that answer.
Any other questions the board wants clarified, so we can hold this till we get the answer.
Can I just go back to this for one moment?
Sure.
If anybody has a question, or would like to see something else in there, please don't hesitate to give me, you know, to let me know in advance.
Will do.
In the packet that you have, before we move on, did you notice the, did you notice the issue, the information from Nantucket also requires that the, is that in your packet?
Yes, you did give us that.
Yeah, these were some of the ones that I was able to put my fingers on, and the one from Nantucket requires the tip certification.
I mean, if it's state law, there's nothing you can do about it, but if it's not, then maybe we could say tips preferred, but not required. Because I'm just thinking, in a one-day-a-year event, people doing, I know, a fundraiser, they're not gonna be.
No, I know, because I do know some of the one-day ones we have given for.
Right, they're not tip-certified. Exactly, exactly.
So, if it's not required.
I will, I will get you the answer to that, and I will, I will get back to you on that, certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you for your review. So, we will carry this over to your next meeting. I want to announce that the town of Sturbridge has received fifteen thousand eight hundred and twenty-six dollars in our Myer Rewards from this past year. I want to thank all the town department heads and employees for their work on the Myer Rewards program, trying to get us as much money back in credits as possible. Essentially, we've been, we've saved the taxpayers of the town almost sixteen thousand dollars this year, so I really want to thank the town employees for their work on that. I would ask the Board of Selectmen to accept a donation of five hundred dollars from Clearview Construction Services for the National Night Out event that we had last week.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
I would like to bring your attention, oh, do you have this in, because I can't see it. I want to announce that the surplus equipment bid auction was done last Wednesday, and the, we had a bid opening, we had a number of different options, items, thank you very much. Oh, wait, that wasn't helpful. Never mind. I now see what I'm doing here, and I'm not, not reading it correctly. Sorry. In your agenda package, you have a report from Janay, which detailed the, detailed all the bids that we received, and the winning bids are as follows. The Oxford Firefighters Association has bid for the 1975 Maxim Ladder Truck, actually the one that we got from the town of Oxford back in, I don't know, the eighties or the nineties, for two thousand five hundred and thirty-nine dollars. We had two air conditioners that were bid upon, the winning bid, the town of Oxford actually bid on two of the air conditioners, an Artic King at eighty dollars and the Frigid Air at one hundred and twenty dollars, and they were the high bidders on those. A gentleman by the name of Brian Larson was the successful bidder on the DPW, I'm sorry, Fire Department Utility Trailer at fifty dollars, the 1963 International Fire Engine at fifty dollars, which we are happy to be getting rid of, by the way, and the 1985 International Engine, I believe it's foreign engine, at ten dollars. Alyssa Spleen was the high bidder, and the only bidder, on the Red Matrix Mountain Bike at one dollar, and a Blue Mountain Bike at one dollar, a used air conditioner at one dollar, and a Frigid Air air conditioner used at one dollar, another used air conditioner, which was a model number, at one dollar, and a 1995 International Six-Wheeler Brown Rear End with no body at seventy-five dollars. If the Board of Selectmen was so willing to accept all of these winning bids, we will immediately dispose of them properly.
Okay, is there a motion?
Is, I'll move that we accept the bids for the surplus equipment on, taken on August 15th, 2018.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion, all in favor?
Madam Chair, I'd like to bring your attention to a phone call that we received today from a gentleman named Mark Vincent of Nineteen Bates Hill. He is interested in the pickup truck that is also, was also on the list and we had no bidders for. He would like a fuel ejection pump, and he was offering the town seven hundred dollars for the truck as-is. He is, I spoke to Greg Morse. We are happy to accept the bid and to have this piece of equipment removed. There is no reason why we couldn't do it this way. We did have a bid, it was included, no one bid on it, so if you folks are willing to accept the generous offer of Mark Vincent of seven hundred dollars for this property, I think it would be benefiting the town of Sturbridge.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Madam Chair, in your agenda package, I have given the Board of Selectmen a proposal to modify your department head meeting schedule for when various departments come in and meet with the Board of Selectmen. In the schedule that I had given to you, you will see that two departments actually come in twice a year. One was Recreation, and one was the Council on Aging. And I'd recommend, or give you a suggestion anyways, that you folks consider changing those to have one time a year for Recreation and substituting the second time of the year with Economic Development and Tourism. As you know, Kevin Filczek is not on this list, and I think the town would greatly benefit from having a yearly update from the Economic Development and Tourism. And you'll also notice that COA comes in twice a year. As you know, we brought on a new facilities person, and I think it would benefit the town to have a, a once-a-year appointment with our facilities person as well to kind of give the Board of Selectmen an idea as to what things those two departments are working on. It is a suggestion, a recommendation from the town administrator, and you can do with this suggestion as you see fit.
How's the board feel? Mary?
I'm all on board in having the Economic Development Tourism, to have Kevin come in. It's a new position, and I think it's good to be updated, and the same with Facilities, but I am not, I guess I want my cake and eat it too. I'm not in favor of reducing Recreation and Council on Aging to once a year. I think that Council on Aging, there's a lot of people that take advantage, a lot of seniors, and to only be updated once a year, I don't think is enough, and, you know.
Well, perhaps I can explain the reason why I suggested.
Okay, so I'm just saying, I like, I like at least, at least twice a year to know what's going on, and I think the people who are watching benefit. And the same with Recreation, especially when there's projects, like, we want to ask, you know, what kind of progress they're making on fields. We want to ask Council on Aging updates on, you know.
Programs.
Programs and renovation versus a new senior center. So, I don't think once a year is enough for those two departments.
The reason I've mentioned this, and the reason I came up with this, was that you'll note, and this is no way to disparage Recreation or Council on Aging in any way, shape, or form.
Right.
But you'll notice that we only have Conservation or Planning Board coming in, Planning Department coming in once a year. And so, you know, I envision that they have as much, if not more, than Recreation and COA. That was the, that was the reason why.
No, I hear where you're coming from, but I guess from my end, like, planning, I'm not saying people are less.
They didn't come before, did they? Planning hasn't come.
Oh, sure. They come, they come every year in February.
Usually if it's something special, though.
The way I view planning is, after the first of the year, she's usually in.
Right, in February.
Yeah.
I think there's just more residents on a regular basis that want to know what's going on at the senior center and Rec. Just the ordinary resident has less say about planning. I mean, that tends to be, you know, companies that come in that want to develop it, they want to know, they can go to their meetings.
Right.
But I think, you know, parents want to know what's going on in Rec. I think the seniors want to know about what's going on. And I think it touches individual residents a little more than planning.
We could add and have, in the month of December, we could have Recreation and Economic Development with water and sewer, and in the month of April, we could have water and, I'm sorry, water, sewer, DPW, COA, and Facilities. Just understand that that would mean four department heads that month. If you folks are willing.
Yeah, but a lot. Can't we do two and two? I mean, we have two meetings a month.
Oh, you have, you mean, you'd like to have department heads on meetings that you don't have typically?
Yeah, if it gets, but, again, having those all together, they're not exactly quite as long as police and fire.
Yeah, we have three. We have Building Police and Fire together, which is usually longer.
It was a suggestion. Whatever you guys want to do.
No, I, you made a great suggestion adding the Kevin's position and Facilities position. I'm on board with that. I just want to add them and not take away.
Yeah, how's the rest of the board feel on that?
I agree.
I agree. Yeah.
Okay. I can amend the schedule, give it to Janay, and we'll do it that way.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
So, June, December, April, four.
Move to all business?
October and April will have four.
At a previous meeting of the board, I presented the board with a policy to consider to articulate the process to be used by the town when faced with a right of first refusal request. I was asked to give the Selectmen some time to review the policy and to bring it back at a later date. Today's a later date, so I'm bringing back the policy for your adjudication.
Nonapproval. No, reading through it, I mean, it's got everything in there everybody needs to know. Any comments from anyone else? Mary?
I'm sorry, I'm, on.
First refusal.
Oh, first refusal, okay, thank you. I thought you moved on to the commit, I was on the wrong thing.
The next one.
No, the right of first refusal, I agree with Mary.
Okay, does somebody want to make a motion then to approve the policy?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
I will amend the policy book accordingly. At the last meeting, I was, I was presented, I presented a suggestion to the town to consider creating a Sustainability Committee to assist the town in planning for the possibility of green community grants or the municipal vulnerability grants. Concerns were raised that perhaps this would delay applications, and language was requested in the description to state that permits were not going to be granted by this group. I have made some adjustments. I modified the memo to you folks. It's the memo dated August 8th now. Essentially, I've highlighted there the mission statement for the Sustainability Committee. I've added Clause Five, which I think spoke to, I think it was Chase's request, that the Sustainability Committee would be prohibited from issuing any permits or licenses in the town of Sturbridge, and I think that you folks had also questioned how, what qualifications these people would have, and I did point out that in the town charter, it does specify that the merit principle is, governs how any persons, whether it's for sustainability or any other committee, you know, how folks would be chosen for their boards and committees. I think I've met all the requirements that you folks have asked for, but at the end of the day, the creation of the committee comes to you folks for your consideration.
Okay, now, I wasn't here at the meeting where it was first discussed, but having read this over, I don't have any questions or concerns. Priscilla?
I don't know if this should be held until we get the new administrator and take the feedback from that individual as well, since they're the ones that are gonna have to live with it.
Well, it's fine.
I mean, I'm just trying to be sensitive on all fronts.
I have no problem with that either. I think it's fair.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, because they're gonna come, they're gonna walk into something so new. And I think though it should be mentioned to the new administrator when they come to peruse it and give their feedback on this.
I am, I know this is a slight aside, but I am preparing a lengthy transition memo for the Board of Selectmen, the new administrator, and to give it to Janay as well, and I will be briefing her on each of the items on this, on the transition memo. I can certainly add this to the transition memo for their information when they come on board.
How's the board feel? Mary?
I don't, I guess I, I don't have a problem waiting, since we haven't had one, but I'll tell you that I will support it. I think it's progressive in not a political way. Progressive and sustainability of a community, I mean, that's one of the most important things, and I think Leon did a good job of addressing any concern that it's. And I think Leon did a good job of addressing any concern that it's not intended to hold any process up. And so I'll wait for the new administrator, but I support it as written.
I, I think it's important to have a sustainability committee now that we're moving towards being a green community. And, you know, that's part of the whole process of becoming a green community to make sure everything is sustainable and.
Okay, so we'll just.
The last item that I have under O business, madam chair, is the reconsideration of the Gordon Holmstrom situation. Mister, as you can tell, Mr. Holmstrom could not attend this meeting tonight. However, the recurring question comes before the board for your consideration. As you know, just to reiterate, I received a formal request from the Call firefighter Gordon Holmstrom. He would like to stay on after the date in which he is required by law to retire as an active firefighter due to mandatory retirement. I did confirm with town council that to do so would require a special act of legislature, which means a town meeting vote as well. In your agenda package, I provided you some information from Representative Semola that you folks had asked for, I don't know, maybe a month, month and a half ago. The question really comes back to the board of selectmen as to whether or not the selectmen wish to pursue this or not. If the selectmen agree with Mr. Holmstrom with his request, I feel that the town, they should ask the town administrator to include this item as an article for the special town meeting for the fall town meeting.
Okay, we've had input, we've had discussion, and I believe it boils down to the fact that with all that, even today, the final thing from town council is, my position is, is that this Call firefighter must retire at age 65. Is that the one? I'm trying to look at the one that.
He wrote back to me last week.
Yes. Yeah.
Absent special legislation.
Yes, but he also wrote that with some of the things Gordon sent it was kind of a little different viewpoint, but he said the law is clear, the law's been upheld and everything. So I think we're at the point of either we uphold the law and Gordon has to retire or we vote, place a warrant on the special town meeting. So what's the board's pleasure? We need a motion for one or the other.
As I said, when Gordon was before us, I, you know, I'd like to give him a chance. And if he, you know, if he still wants to, a chance to work beyond age 65, I would like to place an article on special town meeting.
I don't feel that way. You know, there's possible liability, there's also the fact that we're opening it up. There have been cases, you know, where special legislation has been filed, but I really don't feel that Sturbridge ought to go that route. Priscilla?
I agree with the chair. We've had the situation before and we, and we terminated it a few years back, I think you'll remember. I also think it does open the door and, and he can teach. I know he said he'd like to spend time teaching, nothing precludes him from that. He can volunteer to teach the firefighters anything he wants with the permission and the agreement of the town, of the fire chief. So nothing stops him from doing what he likes to do in that respect. I do think it's a very big liability to the town. And I think the law has been put into place for a reason. And I think we would be walking down a very dangerous path. I won't support that either.
Okay, then, does somebody want to make a motion, one way or the other?
I can make a motion that we do not bring this forward for a special town meeting or special legislation.
Okay, I'll second the motion. Any discussion, Mary?
I just want to add a little something. I understand the different positions. I, I agree with Mike in the sense that we have had that issue in the past, but we also created a special position for that individual called Assistant to the Chief.
No, that's not the one I'm talking about.
Okay, well.
That's not the one.
Okay, so I apologize, I'll talk about my own then. We did have a situation where somebody worked beyond the retirement age and we terminated him. That individual hadn't gone through the proper channels of seeking special legislation. They just, we just retained this individual. And we created a specific position that wasn't subject to the collective bargaining agreement, it was a special contract. So we've made a few exceptions. I think the way to get away around liability is, is you also put it in the hands of the chief in the event that the chief feels that the age is a hindrance in any way based upon health or react, reaction time, that that would be within management's right. So if we wanted to support him, I think there's certainly ways to do it and I would have sought special, special town meeting legislation and a, and a warrant article for him.
Of course, that other case, the one you're referring to, was totally different because I don't think anyone at that time even raised the issue of the state mandating.
Correct, that's what I'm saying.
So, but once it was found out.
Right, but we did.
It stopped.
It stopped, but we also, we also created a position for that individual.
No, we didn't.
Yes, we did.
No, we didn't, Mary.
For one year, he was the assistant to the chief.
We did, but when we found out that it was really not proper,
We stopped it.
that position was totally eliminated. This is totally different.
Do you mind if I just say?
No.
The first thing I want to do is thank Mr. Holmstrom for all his service here. And I've given this issue a lot of thought. And I'm always up here promoting youth and change and I just feel like the liability, there's a reason why the state asks for retirement at 65 in a position like this. And I just think where, you know, his door may be closing and it may open in a teaching position or something like that, it'll give a younger man an opportunity to pursue a career where he had such a great career. And I, I just think that it's a liability for the town at this point.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second, all in favor of the motion, all opposed, three to two. It is tough, I mean, Gordon has put in time, but the liability and opening the door is, plus he himself stated he should have done this earlier. Even in his correspondence, he mentioned Chief Zinter mentioned it to him. And that's well over a year ago, so.
I will, I'll reach to Mr. Holmstrom tomorrow.
But even at that, that doesn't mean the outcome would be different.
No. Okay, correspondence, Mary?
Yes. I had it all ready. One of you, okay, thank you.
Take care. Okay, correspondence dated August 6th, Phase 5 Remedy Operations Status Report. Notice that status report has been filed with the Mass Department of Environmental Protection, August 6th, Mass DOT National Bridge Inspection Standards, issuing bridge inspection reports. August 8th, Sturbridge Cultural Council Community Input Survey. A survey to help align the SCC-sponsored events with the interests of the community. August 15th, the Sturbridge Rec Department Summer Concert Survey. Survey to rate the 2018 Summer Concert Series.
And can I just go back to the Sturbridge Cultural Council for a minute? We are, the Sturbridge Cultural Council is looking to have people complete a survey asking about, you know, what kinds of events and artistic programs that we would like to see in Massachusetts for funding. So it is a nice program and I'm encouraging people to, to submit, thank you. Madam Chair, I have a bunch of minutes for your consideration and approval. First, September 6th, 2016.
Yeah, does anybody have any corrections or anything on that one? Is there a motion then to approve the September 6th, 2016?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye. Next you have September.
And.
Do we have an abstention?
There's one abstention.
Right, next you have September 12th, 2016.
Okay, any corrections, additions?
Nope.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor? Okay, and one abstention.
You have September 19th.
Okay, any amendments, corrections? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, discussion, all in favor? One abstention.
August 2nd, 2018.
I have a correction.
Okay.
On the first page, Janay Lacy has the administrative assistant? Spelling of assistant?
Assistant, yeah.
I'm sorry, where?
I don't even see it.
On the first page.
On the motion.
Oh, the motion.
Yeah, 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 I'm sorry, yeah.
Even in bold print.
Yeah, bold print.
Okay, is your motion to approve is amended?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor? Five to nothing.
You have August 6th, 2018.
I have a correction. On page two, the motion to direct Leon Gomond to better define the mission statement and goals of Sustainability Committee. I don't believe that was made by me, and Mary Dowling did not vote no, I did.
Where are you?
On page two.
Page, second page.
I think Mary made the motion to do that.
I did.
Yeah, I think so.
And I voted no, so that has to change. M. Dowling did not vote no, I did.
Okay, so just swap those two names. Anything else?
That's it, that I saw on my end.
So that's just reversed, okay.
Okay, is there a motion to approve is amended?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, and one abstention.
And you have the minutes of August 14th. We did post that as a official selectmen's meeting in case you folks were deliberating and you had a quorum, you did have a quorum at that meeting. So therefore, I have, I should say, Janay has taken the minutes from the planning board meeting for that discussion you had with the planning board for the minutes for the board of selectmen so that we have a set of, we have an agenda and a set of minutes.
Okay, does anybody have any question on them? Okay, is there a motion to approve them as written?
Motion to approve as written?
Is there a second? I'll second it.
Second. I was there.
I know, any discussion, all in favor? Three and two extensions.
Thank you, madam chair.
Okay. No public access.
Madam Chair, motion to adjourn?
Any discussion, all in favor? Okay, five, someday we're going to have a dissenting vote.
Why would you?
Just to be a pain in the butt.
Mary, that would be.